Good morning. We will call our meeting to order this morning and please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hold on.
He's high tech now.
I'm working on my technology.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, our prayer for the morning. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Now, could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes, I've moved to approve the minutes of January 19th.
Second.
Got a motion in your second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we'll move on to our resolutions. First up, we have Andy Conrad, our county engineer, and Dan Becker is standing in. Good morning, Dan.
Hello, Dan. First of all, I wanted to wish you a happy National Peanut Brittle Day.
Oh!
Are you a peanut brittle fan?
I am. Aren't you?
I love to eat it.
No, I don't make it. The wife does, though. It's very good. That's enough of that. Okay, we've got a couple of resolutions today for your approval. The first resolution is for the final plat for the Hidden Lakes State subdivision. The second resolution is approving the annual assessment of improvements on the Hidden Lakes State subdivision. The third resolution is for approving the final change order to the contract for the resurfacing Medina Line Road. And the fourth resolution is a resolution approving the plan, specifications, and estimates for the project known as Medina V A R dash C R resurfacing project. And I've got some permits, too.
All right, I move to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in your second. Any discussion, any questions? Just one comment.
Yes, sir.
The one...
Did I mess something up?
The final change order was actually a decrease of $132,000 on a road project, right?
Yes, sir.
So that's a good thing.
Right. Are we splitting that up? How are we taking care of that?
Well, I think your boss, Mr. Conrad, would probably prefer that you stay in the engineer's office, so... But that's good because the actual contract price was like 1.8 million and you got it done for just under 1.7 million.
We did.
So that's a good thing.
Yeah, it was very nice. It doesn't happen too often.
Right.
We'll take it when it happens.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
See you guys next week.
Next up, we have Amy Lyon Galvin, our assistant county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amy.
I have 10 resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first resolution is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is a cash transfer for various funds. The third is authorizing the purchase of 7,500 gallons of regular unleaded gas for the engineering center, and that bid went to Cuyahoga Landmark at the price of 1.479 dollars per gallon. The fourth resolution is accepting an application for the use of a procurement card. This one's for the Medina County Drug Task Force. The fifth is authorizing agreements with various veterinarians for dog spay and neuter services for the Medina County Animal Shelter. This adds Broadswick's Animal Hospital to the list. The sixth is approving an agreement for a mental health program at the Medina County Jail. This is with alternative paths for calendar year '21 in the total amount of $276,548. The seventh is approving an agreement for a drug and alcohol program at the Juvenile Detention Center. It's for calendar year '21 with alternative paths in the total amount of $6,817. The ninth resolution is approving an agreement for a mental health program at the Juvenile Detention Center for calendar year '21. This is with alternative paths in the amount of $126,690. The ninth resolution is approval of a revolving loan fund administration agreement with the Ohio Department of Development. It's a three-year term from January 1 of this year through December 31 of '23. And the last resolution is the list of claims for the week in the amount of $1,506,301.62.
I move to approve the 10 resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in your second. Any questions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Holly Murin, our human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
For our personal changes resolution today, we have seven rate increases, one in office for older adults, two in sanitary, and four at Job and Family Services. We have three return from leaves in sanitary, a suspension in sanitary, and a resignation in sanitary.
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Next, we have Scott Miller, our county administrator.
Good morning, Scott. Good morning. I have two resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing an agreement with Medical Mutual Ohio. This is for the administration of our healthcare program and also for the stop loss. The second resolution is accepting the donation of real property from the Board of Trustees of Lafayette Township. This property is going to the Emergency Management Association. It's known as the Heather Hedge Fire Station, and it's located at 5835 Heather Hedge Road.
I move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion in your second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank Lafayette Township trustees for their kind contribution to EMA. That building will be used to house a lot of their emergency equipment and so forth, so that it will be very well-used.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Next up, we have Jeremy Sinko, our county sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jeremy.
I have one resolution for you today, and it's the authorizing the preparation of detailed plans, specifications, estimates of cost, and tentative assessments for the construction of a sanitary sewer along Ryan Road. I move to approve.
I've got a motion in your second, right? Any discussion, any questions for Jeremy?
I guess the question I have is regarding the estimate of costs. You don't... I presume if you told these individuals a gross estimate, but the actual cost is going to be determined at a later time, in which case they obviously make the decision to proceed. Correct. During the initial inquiry to the residents, we gave them a really generic price. We're gonna get that a little bit more narrowed down for them, so...
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy. And we have one resolution for the commissioners. It's a resolution for the purpose of calling upon the governor to provide for full state indigent defense reimbursement in the upcoming state budget.
I move to approve.
Second. We also going to, when we send this down to the state, we're gonna include a letter? Yes, no?
I think we ought to have a cover letter that goes with it.
Right.
And likewise, I would recommend that we also make sure that our legislative team, you know, Sharon Ray, Daryl Kick, as well as Mark Roman Chuck, receive copies of this as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, they've already actually heard from me about all the... just recently, that we're gonna be doing this, so... They're well aware that this is a priority.
Throughout the state, it's a priority for the, all the counties.
Yep.
And has been for many, many years.
Indeed.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. We are going to go into department updates next, and we have Shannon Ryan, our transit director. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning. So this report is for December, but I want to talk a little about things going on for the new year. Our 18 Express launched January 4th. We've gotten some good feedback. Most folks are talking about it in a very positive way. We have many folks from Akron inquiring about how to get to work in Medina. One specifically on 18 at a dialysis unit. Not sure exactly what they do there, but I know it's a medical unit, not one of the hospitals, a different one, so that's exciting to hear that people want to get to work. We're gonna hear more about this. Our brochures and things are going out there to the, not just us, but Akron. We have a bus wrap coming with the logo on it, so you'll see it and recognize it more. And then it's a couple of weeks. We had to make sure that we got the right bus wrap, and that takes a little bit of time.
So Shannon, just to clarify, this is to, the program you just described is to actually get people... Up to this point in time, we had a limitation. We couldn't go beyond the limits of Medina County with our transit. This is a way of connecting our transit with Summit County, Cuyahoga County.
Very good!
That's correct.
I pronounce it Cuyahoga, by the way, but...
And I said, he's from Michigan.
In reference to the one to my left. And so anyhow, it is a way to enable people to go across boundary and get to employment out of Medina County and into Medina County.
Work, medical appointments, pleasure, things like that, mainstream Medina, you know, their efforts. But yes, work is an essential part. We have a consortium meeting coming up, and Kathy and I are working to involve businesses in these, basically the efforts to communicate it out there when you're hiring somebody, hey, there's a way to get to Medina.
Excellent, very good.
Our ridership in 2020 overall, you know, was down about, you know, and I want to say, I want to preface it by, we had a really good year, but our ridership overall was down about 24%.
I would think that that would be expected.
Yeah, I think many of the essential things, we didn't run some fixed route service for a couple of months there, which affected us. But yeah, it was expected. I really want to see people continue to get out, but I think, you know, the events of the world, but yeah. You can expect it. Overall, you know, our demand took the most hit, about, down about 39%, so... But we still got the word out that we were still running, and we were safe to ride, and we got a lot of positive feedback about that. We still haven't received any calls from the Health Department with any complaints about our service of cleanliness and wearing masks. We'd have some, a few folks call in and say, "Your driver didn't have the mask on when he come, when he pulled up to the driveway." But as soon as they get on, they put it on, so I think that's, that's here and there. That's not so bad.
And there's a requirement that anybody on the bus wear a mask.
That's correct. When, yeah. And we do have the two seats behind the driver immediately cordoned off with plastic chains, kind of, in a way to let people know, don't sit in those seats. We have let a few people sit there when there's capacity, so we only have one person to a seat right now, and we're able to do that. You know, it's like four to five passengers per hour on the fixed route, which allows us to keep people spaced out. Works out pretty well so far. I just have one last thing. I want to, I want to thank Steve for coming out and having a transit visit. I think it was good to see, and my staff to see, some interest in transit. I know there's been a lot of interest. We're all busy. Steve, you know, took time to say hi to everybody, made, saw some familiar faces, and I really, I want to appreciate, I said, I want to appreciate that. Transit has been kind of not an everyday conversation in the county, and our goal this year is to make us a lot more prevalent when it comes to work and relevance to how we impact the community economically, socially. I'm really hoping we move past all the events so we can get on, because we were, we were trending up quite nicely in January and February of last year. And I think we're really positioning ourselves with all the things we're doing with new technology. And with that, we have modems going on the buses that we're partnering with the same county entity that does the police cars. So we're getting a really good rate on our per-bus modem cost per month of the Verizon Wireless. I think it's also, I think it's AT&amp;T, but it's the same modem that allows you to have a modem in your home. We'll power our validators, which are easy for validators, and our new tablets. So technology is coming, coming in the new year, too, so... Been a good, good turn of the, turn of the year for a positive note.
I must say, I'm very much impressed how much transit has advanced the last six years. I mean, I've been that long since I've been out there. And very much impressed, and I know in some part it's the technology, but it, the advancements have a lot to do with also the management and the staff. I'll just say that.
Thank you.
My impressions were, were very... You exceeded my expectations, actually. And it's like, wow, this is great. This is good. But I know there's some things to continue to work on, and I've got full confidence that you and the staff are gonna be able to accomplish it. And just thankful that the states, and at least in terms of transit, at least the state of finance has been improved over the last, at least the last six years, and we continue to push that forward. That'd be, that'd be great. And I know that there's great opportunities now, not only, like I said, because of the advanced technology, but also the approach you and the staff have taken to providing services.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, on the Easy Pass, you get a card, right? Is that...
There is no physical card, and I did some research even this, this morning. It is going to be on your phone, an app on your phone with a QR, with a code that swipes over it. There'll be a visual validation on the validator itself, like a green, and then an audible alert that'll allow the driver to know, hey, that was a good ticket. There is a physical card. We're talking about a loadable card. We're also working on technology where you can actually use your debit card, which you know has an RF card in it, eventually tagging that card. Now, not yet for that, but that would even make it even more seamless because we're moving to a safe, cashless system. Our many, many folks are hearing about the Easyfair app, and I think getting past it, and our, our cash take every day is dwindling, and our Easyfair is coming up.
I was just thinking, for some employers, if there's a way that they could purchase blocks of transit miles...
Sure, sure, sure.
It would be something that they could offer to their employees.
Absolutely.
Well, that's something maybe the county can consider, too.
Sure.
For employees.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
All right.
All right, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Great update.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have Debbie Kylie from Job and Family Services. Good morning, Debbie.
So, as you know, Job and Family is three divisions: child protective, child support, and public assistance. So I think it's fair to do just a quick rundown of the three divisions, give you an update that way, and then the agency as a whole. So the governor signed into law a kinship support program, and this was on December 29th. And it was actually in response to a decision made by the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals back in 2017 where a relative caregiver was contesting that she wasn't qualifying for foster care payments. So the ruling was that, yes, she did qualify for foster care payments even though she was a relative. So Ohio hadn't made any move on that, even though we were part of the Sixth Circuit. But the governor's order, I think, was also preempted or punted by a pending lawsuit in Cuyahoga County. So he wrote this into law on the 29th, and the governor's order is gonna assign a per diem to children that are in custody of Job and Family Services even though they're replaced with a relative at a rate of $10.20 per day per child. The rule is still pending, so there's lots of chatter that's happening about this because some of what the, what the rule states is that if it's a relative provider, right now, they aren't licensed, and so they don't receive foster care payments. We give them $200 for clothing allowance and things like that. So there's money that comes to them, but it's not anything on a consistent daily per diem basis. So what they're, what they're proposing in this rule is that if those relatives become... We obtain custody of the child, but we place it with a relative, that relative has between six and nine months to become licensed foster family. If they don't license, then we're not sure what happens after that. Do we have to then pull the child out of the relative's home and place them in a foster family, et cetera, et cetera? So I had a quick conversation with Judge Dunn this morning, too, talking about the ongoing dialogue that will happen. So he and I will continue to keep in touch with one another as this progresses. The State of Ohio and the Directors Association for Public Children's Services is in great conversations with the governor and his team about what this, this end game is, what the rule will be. Currently, we have about 14 children that are in relative placement of about the 75 that are in care. What I need to do and do a little more homework on is of those 75, how many of them we didn't place in relative care because we either couldn't find next of kin, maybe the next of kin couldn't afford to take those children, or maybe their, their needs were so high that they belonged in a residential facility, so lots of moving parts.
You said $10.81 a day?
Yeah, $10.20, so it's about 306.
So if they get certified, would they jump up to the foster care rate?
Correct, which is about $35 per month, or sorry, $35 per day right now.
What's required to get certified? I mean, what do they have to go through?
There's, there's background checks, there's fingerprinting, there's also a safety assessment of the home to make sure there's railings on stairs and things like that. So it's a fairly lengthy process, and I think I already said background checks. They are waiving some of the responsibilities of a relative provider, so long as they're a non-safety issue. They haven't outlined what those are, what those waivers will be, and then how long will the waiver last? So is this, is this forever while the child is in custody, or is it 12 months, et cetera, et cetera? So again, lots of moving parts.
Now, this is before JCAR?
I believe it.
Joint Committee on Agency Review?
Yeah, it just left clearance the 15th.
This is the commentary period, then, that's going through?
It actually just left clearance on the 15th.
Oh, okay.
So the reviewing comments. What was interesting, though, is that you could list your comments, but you couldn't see other people's comments. That was a little frustrating because sometimes those comments will, will generate an idea in your head and go, oh, that's right, I need to also ask about A, B, C, and D. So we're still, we're kind of in limbo right now, which is a little frustrating in my business brain because it's like, I need to plan for this, and I can't plan for what I don't know.
Debbie, where does the funding come for the $10 a day?
This $10.20 per day for right now will come from the State of Ohio. Once the families get licensed, then the burden falls on the counties through local allocations, federal and state allocations. So when they get, when they get licensed, then it becomes the county's burden.
And about, how many children did you say? Did you say how many children?
We have 14 in relative care, about 75 in current placement right now. But I'm, Judge Dunn and I were conversing about how many, how many families might now step up because now there's, there is an incentive or there is an affordability factor for taking on these children that maybe they wouldn't otherwise have taken because they couldn't. And there's impacts towards cash, cash payments, the OWF program for relative only. If I take in my niece, I can receive $302 per month. If I take in my nephew, I get $400 and some odd dollars per month. So I only get $100 more if I have two children. But under this program, at this per diem, I'd get $612 some odd dollars per month. So there's, there's lots of mathematics that the state is trying to work out with the governor's office because I, I can appreciate that they needed to act and they felt they needed to act, but now it's like all these intended and unintended consequences are facing us. And another thing impacting that Protective Services Division is another set of legislation. It's the Family First Prevention Services Act, and its emphasis is on maintaining the least restrictive, most family-like setting for children when they're entering foster care. The hope is, is that they don't enter foster care, that maybe we can provide prevention services while they're in the home, still with parents or whatever relative we might be taking them from. That's gonna be a heavy lift for, for social workers, depending on what those qualifications will be. That rule is, it's not in draft, it's in place, but there's some, it's a national rule or a national law that different counties in Ohio, I tried to find out who the pilot counties were. I'm pretty sure Franklin and Stark are one of them. But they're currently piloting this program to see what's the, what's the burden on staff as well as finances, too. There's timelines on residential care, family team meetings, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it's really shifting the focus to preventative care, which I'm wholeheartedly in, in, in agreement with. But it's also, again, it's, along with the kinship payments, it's like, from a business perspective, I need to be able to plan for this, especially as it relates to the workforce. And lastly, this collaboration, I'm gonna channel my inner high school kid and say I'm completely stoked about it. Leadership Medina County, they reached out to us, it was probably October, November of last year, and they were, they have been amazing partners because they want to focus on fostering children in Medina County and increase that awareness and the need that exists in the county. They helped us with a holiday toy drive for our foster families in November. We met last week or week or two ago, and they introduced us to a couple other people that have shared vision and passion for foster families. So their, their ability to outreach has been immensely helpful, and I'm really excited for what we're gonna be able to do as a group together. So thank you, Leadership Medina County. Big plug for Leadership Medina County. So on to child support. So the division collected over $31 million in support payments in 2020. That also results in thousands of dollars in incentive monies that come back to the county. In December 2020 alone, we received just over $30,000 in incentive monies. The division works about 7,500 cases, and an average of 97% of those have support payments established, and 79% of those cases are making current support payments. The state says you need to be at 70%, so Medina is at 79, so we're exceeding that standard. They processed a little over 230 support hearings. Some of those are also related to our Child Protective Division, so they work with that team a lot in making sure that support payments that are, were going to a potential family that the child has been removed are now coming back to the county to help provide care for that child. And lastly, for child support, they're entering a, what they call a term marathon where children that are aging out of the support system and no longer are going to be required to, to be part of payment support. It takes a lot of time and energy because they do those in bulk. So anybody that's gonna turn 18 in 2021, they are gathering all of them and going to the domestic courts to work those. So it's, that's a heavy lift for them for the next couple of months. And last but certainly not least, public assistance, the SNAP benefit program, which is also food assistance. They mandate, they being the state, mandates that the counties authorize benefits within 30 days of the date of request from a family. Right now, Medina County is at 99%. We're approving every one of those at least 99% of the time. We received in 2020 over 6,000 requests for assistance, and knowing, knowing that number, and we're getting 99% of them approved timely is impressive for that group. We issued $19 million in SNAP benefits in 2020, over $1 million in cash benefits, and about 23,000 individuals with medical assistance each month. That number tends to duplicate, so when I poll it for an entire year, I can't tell if that, those people were on in January and also in February and also and also. That's why I just did the one month statistics. So it averages 23,000 people per month. For the Public Assistance Division, we've also offered, Medina County has offered to be a pilot county for the childcare authorization system. It's currently in a very antiquated system. You would laugh if you saw it. It's very like dot matrix printer-esque. So we're, we're moving that into a different platform, and Medina stepped up and said, "We'll be a pilot county" because I, I feel strongly that the group in the childcare division has a lot of knowledge that we can help Ohio move forward and pushing that to a new platform. And this is the, not most important, but very important. The local Job and Family Service offices are not the, the administrators of unemployment. A lot of people think that we are and we aren't. Unfortunately, anyone suspecting fraud is calling our office. Because of the pandemic, it has given great opportunities to some nefarious actors to issue claims or letters to individuals in the community saying, hey, you're eligible for unemployment. I've gotten many calls where, where people are telling me that, and they're like, "I'm gainfully employed. I've never applied for unemployment." So if, if we could just make a note that if individuals can go to unemployment.ohio.gov, they'll click on "Report Identity Theft," and then there's a form that pops up, and they can fill out what they got, whose name it was in, what address, et cetera, et cetera. Unfortunately, calling is not the best way because the, the local unemployed, or the state unemployment offices are inundated with phone calls right now. Not only because of the pandemic and the increase in claims, but now these fraudulent requests or, or statements are coming in. And somewhat troubling is that I got notice this morning from the State of Ohio that there is some social media chatter out there that is advocating people to protest at the local unemployment office, and I put that in quotation marks because it doesn't exist, tomorrow at noon. That, that will be an effort in futility because there's nothing that the local offices can do. I wrote to Mayor Handwell this morning and let him know. I haven't heard anything locally, but I just wanted him to know that, hey, if something pops up, I need to be aware.
Debbie, to your prior point, I've had two people contact me that have received confirmation letters in the mail of their unemployment application. Both of them are employed, and neither of them submitted the application.
Yeah. And we're trying to figure out what the scam is, too, because I had a friend who's an attorney, and she even wrote to me and said, "What, Debbie, what's the scam?" And I said, "I don't know." Other than someone is probably sitting at home having a very good belly laugh because people are getting unemployment letters and knowing that they didn't apply for them. She actually got one, too, and she's gainfully employed. So I told her to contact unemployment and, you know, report it. Watch your bank accounts, watch your credit cards, you know, anything else from an identity theft perspective. But, but some of them, they don't feel like identity theft because it's just a letter. There's no, don't click here or call here. It's just a letter. So, so it's not like they've, they've gained too much personal information just to name and an address. We've also gotten calls from...
And a social security number, because the social security number is, is the last four digits around the...
True, true. Yeah, so... Yeah, so if they can, if they can report those, don't, don't act on it, but act on it from a reporting for fraud. I've told people, there's, there's been some people that have gotten actual cards in the mail, and it says, "Call this number and enter your PIN." I'm like, "Don't call, don't enter your PIN." I have no idea what gateway that's going to create for someone, so... So, report it and then take that letter and sit it aside and don't, don't respond. So it's, it's, it's incredibly unfortunate that, you know, if that pandemic isn't causing enough problems, then there's this. So as for the agency, the cash balances for the agency remain in very good shape. Um, I've actually begun focus groups with each division's management team to talk about their goals for the future, as well as, um, what can we do better, what can we do less than, what can we do more of? Um, and honestly, it's been a great opportunity to just sit down and, and see them. Um, they've been willing to come to the agency, we have a big conference room in the ground floor where we can meet masked socially distanced, and it was nice to see eyelashes and people. And the work from home, the, in the Child Protective Division, they've been, I kinda joked, they've been, uh, practicing for a pandemic ever since they started, because most of their work is out in the field, they've always been mobile. So when the pandemic hit, sure, they had some things that they needed to adjust, but it wasn't as, as, as big of an adjustment to our child support and our Public Assistance Division. About ninety percent of them remained working from home, but they have in-office days. Um, as you can see, they're meeting their timelines and they're doing great work, um, even though they're working from home.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Very informative.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Next, we have Stacy Malakar from the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. Good morning, Stacy.
Morning.
I didn't call you Stephanie this time. I'm making progress here.
Good job, Bill. Um, thank you for having me come in and, and share a little bit, uh, what's going on with the county board. Um, a few top priorities, uh, vaccines. Um, we have been working with the Health Department on coordinating vaccines for specific, uh, groups of individuals we serve, it's been a great partnership. Um, I can't say enough about, uh, about the Health Department and the collaboration. Um, what we have done so far, uh, there was the A1 group, which is congregate settings, which are individuals that live with two or more people. Um, and we have vaccinated, uh, sixty-five individuals and their staff. So we've tried to get as many staff that are coming in and out of the homes, um, that's been very successful. And now we've moved on to the, uh, 1B air- area. And we have individuals that have the developmental disability diagnosis with very specific, um, health diagnosis. And this group of diagnoses are established by the state, um, so we're following that very carefully. Um, we are gonna have host a closed clinic, vaccine clinic this Friday at our facility. And we're in the process, right now we have, right now, as of this morning, we have a hundred and fifty-five people confirmed yes with their consent paperwork in, um, and we anticipate that that's going to at least double if not more. And so we wanna do a very efficient way to get as many people that are qualified to get the vaccination.
And Stacy, are these of your staff people, are they family members of folks that are receiving services, or?
That are receiving the vaccine?
Yes.
They are, um, individuals receiving services, so they're, there's very specific, um, um, very specific rules-
And they were in 1B?
In 1B, yes.
Yeah.
So, so unfortunately, if, uh, a family member brings, um, their son or daughter that qualifies, you know, we, we can't vaccinate the family member because they don't qualify, but, but, um, you know, we're doing our best to, to work through that. And I have to give, um, uh, great thanks and recognition to all our providers. All our pr- private providers in the county have just gone above and beyond during this pandemic. They've done an incredible job of keeping the folks we serve safe and healthy. Um, you know, COVID, we've been very fortunate, um, that so many people have stayed safe and healthy. And, and really, that comes down to the people, the DSPs, the people that come in every day and are in and out of the house providing supports and services, so they've, they've been phenomenal, I, I can't say enough about that. Um, our school, I'm glad to say that we are back in person, um, for this pandemic. Majority of the time we have been in person, because we know the kids that we serve work better in person with the therapies, um, and the hand, hand, hand over hand and, and, uh, personal context. So, um, we are back, we started back on the eleventh. Um, and again, our safety protocol and the teachers and aides and the staff have done a, a phenomenal job of, of following the protocols and keeping people safe. Um, we are working again with the Health Department, and, um, we're planning that early February that we'll have our teachers and aides, uh, vaccinated, that's the plan so far. So really, you know, big thank you to the teacher and aides, also to the school districts, because we work through the school districts and the coordination, um, with those districts. And the third thing that I want to, um, share with you is strategic planning. We are starting our strategic plan, and, um, I am very excited about the strategic plan. We will be reaching out, spoke with Colleen the other day about, um, having some representation in some of our focus groups, those will be starting here in March, and we wanna get a, a wide variety of stakeholders involved in this process to, to guide us as we move forward in, in, uh, our mission. Any questions that I can answer for you?
Stacy, if I recall, there was a, uh, this goes back four years ago, I remember looking ahead at two thousand and twenty-one, thinking it was so far away. Uh, but the agency had divest itself of providing direct services.
Yes.
And, and there was a timeline, um, how was that going and where are you at in the timeline?
Sure, we, um, this current strategic plan, um, we were, we planned to get out of the direct day service provision, and we actually, uh, removed ourselves from those services, uh, at the beginning of two thousand and twenty, so we were ahead of schedule. Currently, right now, the only direct care services that we are providing, um, is with, uh, community employment. And so we're gonna look and see how, how do we build partnerships, and how do we help the private providers, you know, build that capacity to provide those services in the community?
Are, are the private providers allowed to use your facility that you had for adult services?
We, they actually, right now, there is a private provider, uh, Midwest is in our facility providing the day services to the people that have chosen to stay there. So, so there's still that option to come in, because, you know, we have that great facility for providing those services there, so yeah. It's, you know, it's a tough change, but, you know, we're making the best of it.
So are there additional steps then to, to bring it to a conclusion that need to be done, or are you, once, once you have this last piece in place, is it complete?
The strategic plan, yes, we're going to be looking at a strategic plan on how do we build provider capacity for, uh, community employment, and that'll-
Then that'll be the end of-
Yeah.
Direct services?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Alright, any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. So we need a motion to go into executive session following discussion session?
Yeah, I'm moved to go to the executive session for the purpose of compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Handley?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Yes. Um, so, you know, we go into discussion session, I'd like to invite Isaac Smith from the Park District up. Isaac, do you wanna come up and talk about the, uh, a couple of park plans that you have, and, uh, asking for the commissioners to, get your letters on them?
Yes, absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So the Park District is looking to apply for two different, uh, uh, trail projects. Uh, the first is a Clean Ohio Trail Fund, uh, application. Uh, this project dovetails with some funds that we received from the State Capital Improvement Program. So we received in two thousand and eighteen, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriated through that program for this particular trail project. To give the context of where this is located, uh, this trail will extend from the State Route eighteen entrance at Lake Medina down through our Chandler Preserve to East Smith Road, so it goes north to sou- south along that course. Uh, we do have an easement in principle with Summa Health Sir, uh, campus to, uh, bring the trail through their campus along their road, access roadway and to our property behind there to the south. So we're requesting, uh, gonna be requesting, uh, some additional grant funds through Clean, Clean Ohio Trail Fund to construct that project.
How long of a walk would that be?
So it is just under a mile, at nine tenths of a mile, um, and so we're looking to make that connection down there. We'll also be building a parking lot on East Smith Road to facilitate, essentially make a trailhead down there and extend that, uh, we're, what we're call, now calling the Lake Medina Greenway.
Whereabouts on East Smith?
It is right, if you're familiar with East Smith Road, as you're coming from River Sticks Road up that hill, it'll be just at the top of the hill, there's an old barn to your right. So our property extends, we have frontage right in front of that barn, and that's where the parking lot will be located.
Okay.
These overheads are amazing, you can see the little barn.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
So we're asking for a letter of support to, uh, again, for that application, we'll be submitting that, uh, the application deadline is March fifteenth.
Excellent.
I'm in favor of support.
Yes.
So am I.
Excellent.
Yep.
Here, then I'll give you this letter to sign.
And we also have a, a second project that we're gonna be applying for, if you're familiar with our Chippewa Inlet Trail. Um, we're gonna be applying to another program administered by the, uh, ODNR, uh, the Recreation Trail Program that will be, that, those ones will be for rehabilitation of that trail down towards, uh, Chippewa Road near our parking lot. Uh, there's a se- a section of the trail that needs some reconstruction and drainage improvements, so we're gonna be applying for some funds as well to that project.
Will that help any of the flooding and, and such that occurs in Chippewa periodically?
That won't necessarily help, uh, much of the flooding, uh, it will maintain the access that the Chippewa Subdistrict has along the inlet there. Uh, they use our trail for maintenance access along there. Um, we are doing some things to help with flooding and with neutral load as it relates to harmful alga blooms in the lake. Uh, and if you're familiar with the recent H to Ohio Ward that was announced with, for the Park District for, uh, some wetland creation, we're gonna be doing some improvements along the inlet to capture some of that, uh, water into some new wetlands and, and also create some stream channels for the water to flow into that should add some capacity, but also filter out the nutrients that are in the, in the water there.
When Nate came he, last year, um, you guys were experimenting with something from Israel that would help with the algae blooms, and he said he was gonna put it in his budget, did he continue, are you continuing to use that program?
We continue to use that program, I don't believe we applied, had an application of it last year because the alga bloom, uh, alga levels didn't reach a, a, a level that we need to make the application. However, we do have a inventory of that material still available if we're able to, uh, if we need to put it back into there. So we still have it budgeted in our budget to, to continue to use that program if necessary.
Okay.
But we're also taking other measures to capture nutrients from the, uh, from the inlet and from the other portions of the watershed, just to filter those things out to help mitigate those, the alga blooms as well.
And, and weren't you going to do something along those lines on the old park property? And create some wetlands there as well, or is that part of what you're referring to?
Uh, that is correct, we're also gonna be doing a wetland restoration on the old amusement park, uh, portions of the old amusement park site. We're also gonna be doing some cleanup, there's a lot of impervious surface from the old amusement park, a lot of pavement, crumbling pavement, uh, old structures that have collapsed, things like that, we're gonna be doing some cleanup with that, and basically giving ourselves a clean slate to work with as we go into the planning process for development of that into a public space.
I'm excited that you guys got that property, I think it's gonna be wonderful.
So when, when are you gonna start the cleanup, uh, process, is that this summer?
Uh, the, we're, we're gonna be working on a wetland restoration up, further up the inlet this summer, we're working in design with that now. Uh, we'll be looking in the next year or two here to get into design and cleanup with the actual amusement park site.
Okay.
Um, so we're kind of taking this in different phases, because we have a large project that we're, that we applied to H to Ohio. So we're kind of getting into, you know, bite-sized pieces that we can work with there.
Yeah.
So that'll be the next phase as we go into design, we're also going in, getting into a public planning process with that site for the actual public improvements, so we're dovetailing that with the restoration and cleanup activities.
Yeah, very good.
Good.
Sounds like a lot of activity in the parks, so that's-
It's very busy, we have no, we have no downtime.
Excellent, and, and I know you have still, uh, aside from what you've described, a lot of other trail projects, uh, going on in different places around the county, so it's, uh, very exciting. It's good to see a lot of activity there.
We're very excited to be a part of it.
Yes, so, any other questions?
Nope.
Alright, thanks Isaac.
Thank you very much.
Coming in. And, and, uh- What's that?
Are you good with the second letter of support?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we signed both, yeah, we, we signed both of them, so we'll, uh, we have letters of support going to the, uh, Department of Natural Resources on both projects, so we'll send them in and you'll get a copy of them.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Scott, you wanted to talk about a couple things?
Yeah, I have a couple things, uh, the first thing I wanna talk about is, um, Sixty Public Square. So we received a notice, we've got, uh, two, uh, renters over at Sixty Public Square, have James Coco, who's a CPA, and we have, uh, Dorman Legacy Advisors. Uh, James Coco's lease goes through November of two thousand and twenty-one, and Dorman's, um, lease goes through, um, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, Dorm has asked to, um, move, to, to get out of the lease agreement. Um, apparently he's found another place he can go. I know that when we bought that building, um, we bought it specifically for the prosecutor's office. The prosecutor did not want to move into that building unless he could have the entire building, so in order to him to get to move into the building, uh, we had to promise that he would have the entire building once the, the, uh, leasers left. The total square footage over at Seventy-two Public Square, which is where he was at, was about, it's, it's fifteen thousand five hundred and three square feet. If, uh, the prosecutor takes over that first floor, he's gaining about twenty-five hundred square feet from what he had over at, um, Seventy-two Public Square. Uh, Dorm is currently paying about, uh, for, from, um, September of twenty-one through August of twenty-two, it's about, uh, fifty-six thousand dollars. So if we let him out of his lease, it'd be about fifty-six thousand dollars in twenty-two, and then going to twenty-three, it'd be about fifty-seven. So I just wanna know if you wanna, if you would want to go ahead and move forward and let, um, Dorman Legacy out of their lease and allow the prosecutor to move into that first floor, or what direction you want to go if you wanna keep him there?
Scott, how, how many, you, you said that they had, the prosecutor's office had fifteen thousand square feet in the old, uh, Gessmore Building?
Fifteen thousand less, what, plus civils space in the, uh, basement, which was about six hundred.
Okay, so, and then how many square feet do they occupy now?
Right now, what do they occupy?
Yeah.
Um, it would be approximately-
He's on two floors, right?
Yeah, he's on two floors, so it'd be, it's about ch- ch- three-fourths of eighteen, so, what is that, about twelve?
So they're actually in less space than what they were when they had the other building?
Yes.
It's designed better, though?
Yeah, it is, it's designed, it's designed much better, yeah.
So how many square feet on the first floor then, about four thousand?
Um, yeah, appro- approximately.
Something like that, if I remember right?
Yeah.
I wish we could fit one department in at least half of it. I mean, we need, there's a couple departments, we're still looking for space, or if he didn't need the whole floor.
Yeah, so it's, I, I guess my, where I'm leading is, does Forrest need the space?
He says that he does, and again, it's one of those things where to get him to move from seventy-two into sixty, um, we had to promise him the entire building, otherwise he would not have moved, so.
So what would he use the space for and?
Expansion.
Like what, I mean, we're talking about primarily storage, we're talking about meeting space?
No, the, the entire basement is already storage for the prosecutor's office, and also, um, the judge, yeah, Judge Dunn, Juvenile Court has some storage in the basement also.
Okay, alright.
So he would use it for office space, and it would, it'd be an expansion, um, for future-
Have you checked with him recently to still, to see if he still needs the whole first floor now that the remodel has been done on the other two floors?
Um, I talked to him probably three or four months ago, and he asked about the space down in, in that office, down on the first floor.
This is a lot of space.
I, I guess my question is-
Yeah.
Wh- wh- how's it going to be deployed, what's he gonna use it for?
Yeah.
He's gonna use it for office space, I don't know if he's, he's gonna be moving people from, um, you know, a department, now he's, currently he has like, um, child support on the second floor, I don't know if he plans to move them down, I, I don't know how he's gonna utilize the space. I've not talked to him specifically about that, other than he has told me that he needs it for expansion, for growth in the future.
So, so the one tenant, um, the accountant is, his lease ends?
In November, yes.
Is he, is he anticipating moving out early, or he's gonna stay till November?
He's gonna stay until November.
Okay, so we really can't do anything, or do much until November comes around?
Yes, well, he's, he has one office, he has one office in the entire building, so, yeah. So I know we did talk about moving the grand jury room onto the first floor, um, so that, that's a possibility. Uh, and unfortunately, the accountants in, in that space were the jury room, where we'd have to do some renovations, um.
So, so, I, I guess my thought would be, why don't we make Dorman's lease co-terminous with the other lease, and then we have the whole space all at the same time, it doesn't do us any good to have part of it, not all of it.
No, I agree.
And in the meantime, we can-
That's interesting.
We can talk to Forrest about-
And have a better understanding how he's going to use it, what he's going to, yeah.
I mean, if he doesn't have a current need for the space?
We have other departments that we could use it for.
Well, I, we could either do that, or maybe we find another outside tenant to go in, I don't know, I just...
Unfortunately, and I'm going to, I'm going to say this, unfortunately, when we bought the building, we acquired too much space. I mean, there's, there's, there's no department that I can really move in there, I've got Educational Service Center over in the professional building, and I've got mediation and...
OSU.
OSU Extension Office. I know that once the courthouse is built, we're going to have Seventy-two Public Square, the second floor, which is where I was going to probably put, or mediation's going to go in the basement of Seventy-two Public Square. The second floor, I could put OSU Extension Office, or depending on what happens with the Sixty-nine Courthouse, that would hold both the Educational Service Center and OSU Extension Office. So, again, we have too much space in our buildings.
Yeah, we have too much space in some places and then...
And enough in others, yes.
And some unusual space.
Right.
Yes. So, to move, I mean, we could move somebody into the first floor, I mean, I could move OSU Extension Office, I could move Educational Service, I don't know if it's large enough for Educational Service Center.
I think four thousand square feet would be la- large enough for them.
I think, I think they have more than that open professional building.
Right now, everybody's operating, well, a lot of them are working at home, correct? How much space are they actually using, and then are we really talking about whenever we get back to, I guess, pre-COVID kind of operations? Is that when he would need the additional space, when people actually can?
Actually, I think the prosecutor's office is back, working in the, in the office, yes. So, a- again, the, when, when I spoke to Forrest, Forrest says he needs it for future expansion. So, I, obviously, it's not in the budget to hire additional attorneys, additional staff this year. I do know he did request two additional staff to do some scanning and records and management, some clerical staff, which were, was not approved in the budget.
Well, Scott, I think it's a good thing to have expansion space. I mean, we're, we're going to need it eventually in the future, so I don't think it's a negative to have it available. I guess the question I would say is, what's the best way of deploying it for whatever period of time until Forrest does need it? I mean, I, unless he needs it in, in the near term, which is, you know, one or two years, I would say that we ought to get somebody in there, you know, a county department in there...
I would agree.
That would benefit from it, then...
But, but I don't, who do I move in there, I mean, even if I move, let's say I move OSU Extension Office in there, I still can't sell the professional building because I still have Educational Service Center in there and I have mediation in there.
It's a stop closer, it's a stop.
You know, I mean, again, I think you talked about putting mediation in, in the Seventy-two Public Square after the courthouse is built.
Correct.
So, why can't they go in there on a temporary basis until, I mean, that, that space is very, very nice space, there's conference rooms. It would be set up, there is set up as it exists today. I believe in a, a format that would be, could be utilized by mediation.
We would have to do renovations, I mean, if, if I move, if I move two different departments in there, especially with mediation, I would have to do some type of a...
Partition.
Partition, giving mediation one side and...
But, but I guess you could put mediation in there, and that would be one less occupant in...
Professional.
Public Square, or, yeah, the professional building, thank you. And, and, I mean, it gets us closer to our ultimate goal.
It does, it does, I'm just thinking, you know, once we get, once the courthouse is built, we, we will have space for those departments in the professional building.
Right, but courthouse is not going to be done for...
Until twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
At least two years.
Right, twenty twenty-two.
This is more of an immediate solution, I know.
What I'm suggesting is, if we could put, and I'm just going to suggest mediation in there on a temporary basis for two years, without doing a lot of build-out and, and changes to the structure, we can get them in a more professional setting and, and get them out of the professional building, and, and it gets us closer to our ultimate goal, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay, so, if I'm hearing you correctly, you want me to go ahead and allow Dorman to, out of the lease in November of twenty twenty-one?
Do you agree with that?
And then you want me to...
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to want him out sooner, frankly, but...
And you want me to move somebody into that space on a temporary basis until the courthouse is completed?
Well, we ought to take a look at it, I mean, my, my concern is, there is an expense to moving, an inconvenience, obviously, aside from the expense to a department move for two years temporary and then move them to another place, and then in which case, you vacated, if you haven't completely vacated the Washington Street Building, then what have you gained? So, I mean, if you, until you could actually utilize and do something with Washington, it doesn't make sense to move anybody out, frankly. At least that's in my mind, so I, that's, who's liaison to prosecutors, sorry, I haven't looked at that. I probably got the short end of the stick today, I have to look it up.
I don't think I got it.
Okay, well, then I guess it must be, I guess, want to have a better understanding, I guess, how the space would be used for growth.
Yeah.
Since I wasn't here for his budget hearings, nor have I, was I around whenever that building was purchased, so, just, okay. Not known what the commitments were, would be, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
And I have no, no problem ultimately living up to our commitment that prosecutors can occupy the whole space.
Right, right.
It, it's just that if they don't need it at this time, if we have other needs for it, I think we ought to fulfill those other needs.
Okay, all right, we'll move in that direction. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, we received a letter from Judge Kovak on late last, last week. And basically, she is once again asking that she be excluded from the new courthouse construction. You know, the current space in the eighteen forty-one courthouse is about sixty-five hundred square feet, about forty-four hundred, that is staff space, got to exclude the public area. The current plans show twelve thousand four hundred and ninety square feet for Domestic Relations Court, with eleven thousand five hundred being staff-only space. I did talk to Judge Kovak several weeks ago, and they had some concerns regarding some of the placement of the hearing rooms, they had concerns about their bailiff being able to secure the facility and to respond to any altercations that may occur. So, we, we made some changes to the plans, we, we put some restrictions, some doors, and we moved the hearing rooms, so all the hearing rooms are grouped together. But she still is uncomfortable with, with the plans as they are. So, she is requesting that we either keep the Domestic Relations Court in the eighteen forty-one courthouse, they occupy the first and the second floor, or that they move the Domestic Relations Division into the first and second floors of the Sixty-nine Courthouse, which was her previous request that we discussed, or that we move them into a different building entirely, so...
But this, okay, I guess I'm confused because didn't you get an email recently that said this didn't meet minimum, and it's almost double what they have now?
It is, yes, the spaces is almost double what they currently have, and the staff space is, is actually greater than that, it's about two and a half times.
Two and a half times, right.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's a much better space as far as...
You know, Scott, I, my opinion...
What they currently have.
We, we need to build this courthouse to satisfy the current need and, and the future needs going forward. And I think as it's laid out in our plan here, that it does that. And if, if Judge Kovak doesn't need the full twelve thousand four hundred and ninety square feet of space, let's compact them down into a smaller space, but build the project, and then we have that space for future expansion for other departments or other, other courtrooms.
So, you're saying not to build the proposed?
No, I'm saying, we, we build, we build the proposed, and I'll just talk about it as far as the footprint is concerned. I mean, if she's saying she only needs sixty-five hundred square feet, let's carve out sixty-five hundred square feet and give it to her.
Okay.
And, and, and then that, that'll give us roughly six thousand additional square feet that we can use for expansion space in the future.
Okay, so are you, are you asking me to go back to the architects and have them change this, or my preference would be to leave it as is?
Does this, okay, so this, this whole purple section too, one of, one of the things, we were heading into twenty-first century, you know, courtroom security, things of that nature, does this purple section also meet the new Supreme Court requirements for courthouses? Wasn't that one of, one of the things we were working towards?
Yes, we believe that it does, it hasn't gone down the Supreme Court for review and whatnot, too, but we, we believe that it does accomplish that objective. But, so right now, Scott, Domestic Relations Court is on the second floor of the existing courthouse, right?
Yes. No, third floor, third floor, you have juveniles on the second.
Okay, all right. And, excuse me, in this design, they would be on the second floor, correct?
This design, they are on the second floor, correct.
And all one floor, there wouldn't be up separation of floors, correct?
Yeah, it's all on one floor.
It's a nice...
They, they would have the, the north end of the new construction and the second floor of the eighteen forty-one courthouse, it'd be renovated.
It's a significantly larger space than they have now.
What I gathered, one of our communications was, was the configuration of those rooms in the new, and those are all non-load-bearing walls, correct, I mean, in other words...
Which parts?
Correct.
Well, in the, in the new, in the new courthouse portion of it, right.
In, in the new courthouse, you're going to have columns.
Right.
And those will be the only load-bearing structures in that facility.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, but what we presented to her is this configuration of the rooms and the hallways and everything in that section.
Right.
Uh, I mean, the electrical probably needs to be where it's at, electrical room, but everything else is, so if she's not happy with the size of a, of these hearing rooms, you know, or the configuration of that, that she can obviously make some proposals between now and a certain point in time as to what the flow needs to be, to meet her concerns, because they're, they're not load-bearing, it just, I just want to give her a blank page and go, so, you got that space, how do you want it? But that's, yeah.
I mean, we, we can approach them, I know that the architect has talked to, talked to the judge about the space, and the, the architects are actually very excited because they thought when they put this plan together, it met every criteria that the judge had laid out.
It's, I don't know, it just seems so much better than what they have now.
Yes, here's, I, I mean, the, let's just start in reverse order. Under no circumstances would I consider putting them in a different structure, somewhere outside of downtown Medina, in a different building in their own, so that, a third option is out. I don't believe that the sixty-nine addition, as it's currently configured, is going to work for them, and, and it's going to cost us a fair amount of money to renovate it, to fit for their use, so, in my opinion, that one is out. I don't think keeping them in their current situation is really feasible going forward when we're building a new courthouse. They should be part of the courthouse plans, so, in my opinion, number one is out, which leads us to, we have a drawing, we have a plan, we've approved the plan, and I think we should stick with that approval. That's where I'm at.
I'm with you.
Me too.
Okay, so, keep the plans as, as is, and continue to move forward.
I mean, I, I don't know whether, at what point in time you can say, hey, remove a wall or add a wall, but in that one section, but, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I certainly, to your point, Steve, I mean, if they came back and said we need the door there instead of there...
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's fine.
Exactly.
I, I think, I think we have gone through this and have been working on this for two years now, or over two years, and...
In February, it'll be three years since facility, yeah.
We have a, we have a good plan, and I think we should stick with it and just move forward with it.
Okay, all right, yes, and, and Commissioner Hambley, you're, you're correct, taking down a wall, building a wall, at this point, we can still do that, but, you know, we, they're starting with the construction documents, they're starting putting the supports and the ducts and, and the plumbing, and so, we're getting to a point now where changes have to be very minor. If we, if we make any major changes, we're going to, it's, it's going to go back to square one.
But there have been changes made based on requests, correct?
We have, we have, we have made changes based on requests, and then they've, they've been doors and walls, and I know for Domestic Relations Court, again, we moved two of the hearing rooms from the western side of the building to the eastern side, so that all the hearing rooms are together. Then we moved the clerk of courts, the domestic court clerks down, and took that space up, and then we added a door, a security door, so that they would not, the public would not have access to the western side of the building.
And those hearing rooms have two access points?
Yes, they have access points from, from the, from the north, which is a staff-only area, and then the, the lobby, which is where the public would, would be able to...
As far as future growth, it's so much better than the plan that they have now, and, you know, I, I, I like the idea of our employees being in a sa- safe, secure building that meets, you know, twenty-first century courthouse standards and...
Okay. All right, thank you.
Nails, Scott?
I don't think so.
You're good. All right, thank you.
I did have one, Amy, are you there? I did have, Amy was going to discuss one email that we got recently from Community Action Way Medina.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Community Action wanted us to help publicize that they received an extension on the Home Relief Grant that had been available in November and December, so eligible folks should reach out to them if they've got past due rent, mortgage, and water and sewer assistance needs for missed payments related to COVID. And they cite a couple of examples, for example, COVID diagnosis in the household, lost employment due to COVID, or increased expenses due to COVID. So, the flyer is on the Commissioner's Facebook page, but I'll also share a phone number with anybody who's also listening in, it's three three zero four six one nine three three three, to schedule an appointment, they just started taking them Monday, and they said if you have difficulty getting through, try calling on a Tuesday or a Wednesday morning. And if you have to leave a message, please leave a message, and they'll call back to see if they can offer assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe we can get that in the Commissioner's newsletter as well. That's a, that's a great program. Colleen, do you have anything?
No, I just had from Community Action.
Actually, I just wanted to bring up the, the Helping Hands, Greg Ramler put that in there. With your permission, just suggest that Brian, since he's, he's our media guy, essentially, it's part of his assignment, take a look, every other month, it goes eleven thousand households, in a sense, just coordinate with us as to what article to present, what's going on with the commissioners, just to educate the general public.
I would love if Brian would take that over, that would be great.
So, yeah, and then just work with us, and if one of us want to do like a little feature piece or something, then we can just do it that way. But at this point, just, his responsibility is coming up with the story idea every other month.
I, I suggested that he do an interview of us, and then...
There you go.
And also that, that it'd be focused on maybe like the office for older adults, since it's a seniors kind of...
Exactly, and, but the office for older adults does, if you look at the, Laura Toth does have a spot in there, a spot in there, every senior center has a spot. The auditor has, or not the, the treasurer has a spot in there, so if you look at some of the, most of the state, or the county officials have spots, as well as Veterans Office, they have a spot, I as a legislator had one, Sharon Ray's going to actually do it, but she's going to rotate with Darrell Kik and Mark Romancheck to do some story and feature, so, but this is something, I think, the commissioners, obviously, the office, we can just kind of promote what our various departments are doing that maybe people aren't aware of. And so, we just, but if that's okay, that's your approval, then, okay.
Great suggestion.
All right, very good, that's all I got.
I just have two things, we got an email, I think, just recently on sales tax for December, and our sales tax is up by nine percent just for the month of December, so it continues to be strong, and, and... Keep our fingers crossed that it'll stay that way. Other thing is, the city of Medina is looking for support. Apparently, there is some proposal underway at a federal level to increase the weight of trucks, so I think the current weight limit is like eighty-five thousand pounds, they want to bump that up to ninety-one thousand pounds, and then they want to increase the length of the tandem trailers.
Is that just on state routes or everywhere?
It would be everywhere. Um, it would be everywhere. And, um, and.
Well, federally funded infrastructure, yes.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
But, but we do get a lot of trucks that come through the city of Medina and through our, our local, and on our local roads. And, um, that weight limit would be a, an issue. So, um, uh, with your approval, are you okay if I sign a letter that just says? We're in support of that?
Yes.
Um, Sheriff Bryce has also signed it, so, um, I just wanted to make sure that you're okay with it before we do anything. That is all I have. Anybody else? Rhonda? Isaac, anything else you thought? Jeremy?
Yeah, I just want to let you know that we did open.
Jeremy, would you come up?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Just wanna let you know that we did open bids yesterday for the, um, eighty seven thirty building renovation, so the, uh, low bid was, uh, site builders at, uh, seven hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, so, um, GPD is, we're working with them, they're gonna vet the company, make sure everything looks good. Um, planning on trying to get that up for next week for, uh, you know, awarding, so.
Good, excellent. Uh, if there's nothing else, we're gonna go into executive session, and then we will come out and retire the meeting. All right. We're good? All right, it's eleven oh-two, we are out of executive session. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.